And this is the Town Council Committee of the Whole Special Meeting. All council members are present with the exception of Councilor Zepary, who notified that he is running late from work, so he will be with us as soon as he can. We have new business tonight. We're continuing with the budget deliberations. And tonight on the agenda, we have the Board of Ed budget. And I think I'd be ready. Councilor Baumgartner, we're going to go to you for this particular item. And this is on page 171 in your budget book. Of course, you know that the board has presented us with a fleshed out detail. But the number you can move, Councilor Baumgartner, will actually appear on 172.
Move the amount of $77,438,090.
And I will be happy to second that. Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Granatowski. Thank you, Councilor Baumgartner. All right, so the Board of Ed prepares every year for us a packet that is in great detail with lots of information for us to digest. But I will right now turn it over to either Chairperson Watson or Superintendent Austin, if you want to give a brief overview before we start. We had the presentation the other night, but I don't know if you wanted to add anything.
Well, I really wanted to showcase where you can find this budget book for anybody who would be watching, that we've put it up on our website. So if I can share, I can kind of show you where to go. So am I able to share?
I believe you're a panelist, so you should be able to. Or if you just want to say the website, then when Mr. Greeley does the presentation, he can add it in later for the public.
Okay.
I'll give the address.
So one of the things, it's right on the front of the website. For some reason, I can't reduce my screen here. Let me just see if I can change the view. Exit full. Okay, now I can. Hold on. Because I'd like to show you where. Having trouble here.
Thank you, Tana.
Technology is your friend.
I know. Exit full view. Be patient. It's not letting me.
Mr. Burt, can you get to the page from your computer? And then Superintendent Austin could just kind of walk you through where she wants you to click.
I'm actually having trouble getting into the website. Give me a second here. It's like just.
So let me do my share screen. This should work. Let's see.
All right. There you go.
We are.
Thank you.
I'm going to show you that this is Welcome to Groton Public Schools, where our mission is teaching and learning. And in a richness of cultures and with a respect for all, of course, our three goals are providing dynamic rigorous curriculum, ensuring effective engaging instruction, and building excellent learning environments. And we've included our diversity, equity, and inclusion statement, which the board approved. And a committee of over 100 teachers with subgroups actually worked on this. And so did our board. Dr. Ackerman and Jay actually wordsmithed to make it a statement that we could all remember in a richness of culture and with respect for all. And then as you go down, you can see both the board presentation, which we presented to you last week, and then also the Board of Ed details. So if we go down, you know, there's a letter from Kim. And then it orients you to everything that's in the book. And we have our graphs and charts, which I went over. And one of the things I had told the Town Council is every education budget is kind of built on the same thing. What we give our students is their teachers and administrators and paraprofessionals and custodians. And that really amounts to over 75% of the total cost of a school budget. Everything else is smaller pieces of the pie, as you see. And then, you know, one of the things we looked at was revenue. And as you see, in the darker blue, that's the. Let me make it bigger here, if you can see it. That's what the town provides through our taxpaying dollars. And the other, basically, third is through all the grants that come directly to the town. And as I had said the other night, impact aid has been tremendous. And we've really gotten more than what we've expected in the past couple of years. And because of Congressman Courtney and the bill that got passed through the Senate and the Congress, we are able to keep those numbers for another year. And it's really important that our parents fill out those forms so that if they are active duty military, work in a military installation, or on the casinos in a federally owned property, we need to know that, because that money goes right to the town to support education.
All right. Thank you so much for showing the public how to find what they need if they're interested in reading more about the budget.
And this is really what I want to orient you to. This is that first page, which if you look down, it's really a 0% increase. So what we asked for last year was basically $77,341,861. And what we're looking for this year is $77,438,090. But as I go back to that, the biggest chunk of that budget is in staffing. And if you look at this, you can see that through contracts and obligations that we have, and mostly to our teachers, they're the largest pool of staffing that we have. You know, it's really up above 2% between the steps and the contracts. And the contracts. And we heard from RTM member last week, well, I always thought that there would be cost savings with this budget. And there are. When my Dr. Grenier and I first set out to create a budget back early fall, we noticed that those contracts and that amount for wages and salaries was up, you know, over 2%. And then the entire benefits, salaries, purchase services, the entire budget was up to 3.1%, which was in the amount of $79,843,728. So when we're asked what the cost savings is in this budget, it's $2,405,635, because we've taken it down 3.1% to get to the zero, which was out of the gate what we really owed, mostly for benefits and for staffing. So I just thought we could set the stage that. When we talk about cost savings, we're thinking about what do we save from one year to the next? When we're consolidating three schools and putting them into two, we don't have less children. We have the same amount of children. We need the same amount of teachers. But we're one less principal. We're one less administrative assistant. And we were really looking at all those administrators and support staff that actually help us to run a building to reduce that in order to get to these efficiencies. When we talk about cost avoidance from here on in, we won't need that principal or those support staff that will be able to run five elementary schools without that. So there's a difference when we say cost savings and cost avoidance. And I wanted to make sure the public understood that.
Thank you.
So as you see, you know, every budget, this gives you a little more detail than you saw the other night. Every budget has object codes from 100 to 800. 100 being your salaries and wages. And this breaks it down to administrators. Can you see this pretty well on your screen?
We can. And we've all had a chance to read this. And I think the council would really like the opportunity to ask some questions. So I'm glad you showed this, though, for the public so that they can take a look at it as well and for RTM members that may be watching. But I'm sure we have counselors that would really like to get into this and start asking some questions. So thank you.
Absolutely. We can do that. I just wanted to orient you first.
Right, great. And I don't know, Chairperson Watson, did you want to introduce your board members who are here? I know we have quite a few.
That's great. Susan, would you be willing to stop the screen?
I would be happy to.
Thank you. So, yes, so I would love to be able to introduce you to Elizabeth Porter, better known as Liz. But her name on her Zoom says Elizabeth. And so I read what I see aloud, but it's Liz. I've Rita Volkman. There's Andrea Ackerman, who I'm excited about being here. Jay White Love is here. I think I saw Jane Giuliani is here. Giuliani, sorry. And.
That Kim Shepperson Watson is here, too, I think.
Oh, yes. And then I'm also here. There's Jane. Thank you, Jane, for always allowing me to be wrong with your last name and never criticizing me for it. Thank you.
In the next slide, it will be Smith.
Thank you very much for coming out, members of the board. And at this time, I'd like to open the floor for counselors to ask any questions or offer comments that they might have. And let's see. We will start off with Councilor Franco. Oh, it looks like Board Member White is here.
Oh, good. Thank you.
That's Lee. Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Franco, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. The other day, when we had our budget deliberations, the VNA budget came before us. But although the VNA was not present at the meeting, so we were unable to ask them questions. So one of the items that came up was the amount that they're charging for the 2021 school budget and the 2022 is the same. They haven't changed anything. But basically, majority, probably all of it, is based on their hours. So it's payroll. And the question being, did they receive PPP funding or HHS money or any kind of other funding that would offset? Because this is all basically payroll, on the most part, that we're seeing. And if there was an offset, I'm wondering where it is. And they didn't come to speak, so we were unable to ask any questions.
We probably have to ask them that question. I know that they did have some efficiencies, cost savings, because with the closing of one of the elementary schools, they were able to reduce at least a portion, a good significant portion of an FTE. There may be additional costs each year, you know, based on their contracts and what they are having. So if it came out even, it could have been that wrapped up into that was a savings. But I wouldn't be able to answer that specifically. But I could find out the information.
I would greatly appreciate that. And that was the other aspect of it with consolidation of school. I believe that 2020 was lower and this year was higher. So I'm not quite figuring that out as to how. And the thing is, for us to go back and possibly change a number or figure this out, we did pass it. But we may have to go back, because nobody was there to speak on it at all. So that is a. And I'm trying to find the page in my book. Actually, I tagged it right here.
Because last year, Rachel, would have been a situation similar to this year, where we had two middle schools and we went to one middle school. So there was some consolidation. And there were, you know. I mean, the school is much bigger. Like I said, there's double the amount of children. So when you're taking care of health needs, you might still need an additional person.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it in the bulk where it actually gives all the details of it, because it. Just can you hold on? Well, maybe you should be able to come back to me and I can, if anybody else has questions or.
And I was going to say, if anything should come up, even after we speak, please do feel free to send me an email. And I might not have the answer, but I could find the person that does. So.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And that's where we were asked, you know, basically to hold on to this and we would bring it to this meeting and, you know, bring it forward tonight. And then if you could possibly get answers to that, that would be great. Because we're just not quite seen. Wait a minute. And also in the book. Yeah, because the VNA for schools in 2020 was 722,000. I'm going around. I'm not giving you all the change on that.
Okay, that's fine.
2021 was 1,081,000. And then FYE 2022 is 1,132,000. So there's no cost savings. And also, if there was PPP money and HHS. And another thing that was brought to my attention that they might have been folded in with Yale now, because I think Yale took them over. My thoughts are, if Yale used those numbers to apply for PPP money, then partially, some of that might, should possibly be used towards it, because it is also. PPP money was basically used for payroll. So this would be part of their payroll as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I know that our PPE came from the CARES Act I and the coronavirus. So we were able to, instead of using operations money to pay for that, we were able to use the grants that came to the school district.
Right. But VNA is, I think, a business. It's a little bit different, probably.
Probably.
And PPP money was supposed to be used for basically payroll and things of that nature. And HHS money was money reimbursed for people that could take insurances. And I know the original qualifier was having to do with Medicare. And then they reduced that requirement. So everybody was eligible to use it if they, you know, if they had any kind of insurance. So. And I do know that they take our insurance information. I don't know if they actually charge it, but I've never seen a charge. But I just thought it might be something to delve into.
Right. And I think that information probably goes directly to the town instead of the school district, but I can find out more information.
Just for information, that passed unanimously, the full amount passed. 10841, which is VNA School Health, passed for the full amount, 1,132,493. And it did indicate to us in the detail in the back that there has been a change in the hourly rate for both the RNs and for the school health aides. The rates, I think, have increased. So, all right.
Can you just tell me, Mayor, was that an increase from the year before?
That was.
1,132,000.
Yes, it went from 1081278.
Okay. But not too significant. So I'm wondering if those increases in rates may have had an impact on that. I do know that there was, I don't, since they weren't there to speak to it, I have heard through Denise Doolittle that they were able to save on FTEs because of the schools that are closing. The three schools closing and only two staying, and two brand new schools.
Right. And then Board Member Watson, you had your hand up. Did you wish to speak? No, you're good? Okay. All right. Are there other counselors who wish to speak? Are there second time hands? Councilor Franco, for your second time?
Yep. So I want to continue on this. So it does state in here that the visiting nurses are requesting the budget, they were requesting 7150 an hour for the RN and 2425 for the school health aides. And the health and wellness program are requesting $75, and that's all per hour. So. And that they hadn't increased their rates in years, but they need to do so due to salary and benefit increases. So as I was mentioning, although it did pass, we were told, basically, we could talk to you this evening. And if we need to come back to it, we will. And so if you could. That'd be great. So now I'm quiet down on that subject matter.
That's all right. It's an important subject.
Now, Chairperson Watson, I see your hand. I don't know if that's a fluke or if you're.
No, this is for real. Sorry. I'm. Rachel, I apologize. It's Monday. And I'm not quite sure what you're asking for us to look at or do about the VNA.
Well, one of the questions is, did they receive HHS money? And did they receive PPP money from the federal government? Because if so, that could have been a substantial amount of money. And it's supposed to be used in a business aspect of it and in healthcare business, it's supposed to be used for payroll. It's not supposed to be like, I know some municipal money was not supposed to be used to decrease taxes, or it wasn't supposed to be used for specific things. But this, because this is like what I do for work, was specifically supposed to be used for payroll issues and items. So if majority of this is about for VNA and it's payroll, I mean, I don't know how else, I mean, that's majority of everything. If they received PPP or HHS money, where was it applied to? If not to help lower this?
I got it.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
I just wanted to note that Councilor Zepary has joined us. It is 6:22 and we are at nine counselors. Councilor Zepary, we have already put the motion on the floor for account 1080. And the amount we moved was the amount in the budget book, 77,438,090. And this is MBR. Councilor Aubrey, you have the floor?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that last year, when they were there, I kind of went into it a little bit more. I personally think that we should look, when we're talking with them, about them restructuring to use some LPNs in order to cut the cost. And I would just mention that again, that I think the structure needs to be looked at. Thank you.
I can ask that question, too, Councilor Aubrey.
Thank you.
And next, we have Councilor Bordelon. You have the floor?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the nicely thought out budget. I appreciate the thoroughness and the time it takes you guys to get to your numbers. I think, looking at this, I mean, you guys made a lot of effort to come in, you know, at the number. So that's very respectful. Looking at this, though, you know, I see the concerns for making sure students have access to free lunch. I know other districts have done it. Some of the state schools are doing it. I know this year, because of the funding came in, we were able to do such. But I was just hoping or encouraging, maybe in the future, I mean, COVID funds won't be around forever. But looking at a way that we can incorporate that into our budget to make sure all students have free lunch at every school. I know at one point, there was the application for Title I and West Side. And I think it was Claude Chester and several others qualified, but not everybody. And then COVID came, so it was a start. But I'm really hoping to see that as a district-wide, something available to all of our students. I think it would be extremely helpful after coming off of COVID. The other thing that I'm really, once again, still advocating for is looking to have a ROTC program in our school district. Being that we are a military school, I know I've come before you guys as an RTM member, as a constituent, several times. And I think it would really benefit us to have such a program. We look at continued learning and different avenues for students. And I think New London does a really good job with their ROTC program. And I think that we could have something similar, if not better, on this side of the river. So I encourage that we continue to look at that. I know Superintendent Austin had stated at one point, you know, that she would keep continuing to look for grants to fund that. And I appreciate your efforts. I know that you're passionate about it, as well as I am. I just think it would only benefit the student body at Fitch to have the option currently, you know, there might be an average of, I don't know, four to five to 10 students that join the military. And even if they don't join the ROTC program and get fully accepted and do the half-college time and then join, just having the structure and discipline to prepare them to be an enlisted military student, then service member would only benefit them. Speaking to other students in different communities that have programs, it really helps. And it is a career path. And so, but again, I thank you for your budget. And I really hope to see ROTC program be something you support and fund as well as free lunch for all in our district, even if we can't get the grants, finding ways that we can offset the cost to fund it. Thank you.
So I just have to tell you, I did talk to Ernie Koschmeter. And we will be providing this through the summer until the end of September. But he's already reached out to see that we can't continue this. So we're working really hard. We're going to have to get them our numbers. But we are on a mission to, because we think nutrition, health, and safety are the foundation for our kids to learn. So, you know, that's something I know this board believes in. We actually have a Department of Defense STEM grant that we are in the process of applying for. And it's actually going to be a regional grant, but Groton is doing a lot of the legwork. But we're connecting with Learn and other districts around New London, Legerd. And that's really for helping us with the manufacturing pipeline and a lot of those careers that kids, you know, they're in this wonderful area that has so many opportunities. We want them ready for those opportunities. And we also have put in for Department of Defense Education Activities STEM Grant, which is a career pathway grant, elementary, middle school, and high school with military science and health involved. So, you know, as soon as we hear information, we'll be giving the board any news. Hopefully, it's good news. And we certainly would share it, too, with the Town Council and the RTM. But thank you for that support, Congressman Bordelon.
Yeah. And then my last question, or do you want to second back to me? There you go. I had one more question. Would you want me to come back and do my second turn? Or do you want me to just segue it now? Or how would you like that?
I stopped the timer because I thought you were done. So go ahead. I can start it again, though.
Okay, so I'll finish off whatever I have left. Also, I wanted to see where in this budget exactly, you know, we had achievement gaps that we needed to close before COVID. You know, I know that we're in Alliance District and we kind of got in because there was an extra slot. But we also had some achievement gaps, looking at some of the numbers at Claude Chester from when we had structured standardized testing. And then now it's been starting back up. But those gaps just didn't go anywhere. And COVID, no matter how great a school is, having access to computers and implementing programs, students, you know, those gaps are hard to close. And there is a concern now that more students are going to be identified as being in that possible gap. And some that were there might have lost some other skills. So my question, I guess, is, is where in this budget are you implementing? Or how much, what percent of your budget are you looking to put into closing achievement gaps, remedial support for students at the high school, elementary, and middle school level to make sure that we are able to make the grade and retain the grade? And maybe even summer school as a possibility or enrichment program? So where do you guys see that you're, you know, as far, where are we at as far as that stands?
So that's a two-part answer. Yep. We really always want to make sure that in our operations budget, we have that support for children, no matter what. In addition to that, through the CARES Act I, II, and the potential S or III that's coming down the pipe, we're actually getting an S or coordinator to help us and work as a team to really utilize those funds in the best way we can. But in our operation budget, we have things like summer school for special education and also for credit recovery and middle school and high school. This year, through the CARES Act, we're going to also expand that for our elementaries and be able to provide even more tutoring and support in the summer. Besides that, for our DODA grants, we have camps. So we're going to have a STEM camp. We're going to have a literacy camp again. And we might even have a math camp. The whole purpose, I think, this summer is to make it fun. Bring those kids back and get them excited about learning again at all those grade levels. So one part is the operation budget. And this board has so supported things like literacy specialists, math specialists, you know, teachers who are highly certified and very competent as being teacher leaders to help support coordinators, six through 12, to articulate that. And one of the projects that we've been working on and will continue to work on is our SRBI, which is our intervention program. which is our intervention program that we, you know, really make sure that kids are getting intervention throughout the school year. And then we're looking to summer and looking before and after school to program. So some of that solid foundation is through our operation budget. But we've been able to extend this support and give even more support. One of the stories I've heard from our literacy interventionists and consultants is that they have made so much progress progress with students one-on-one. And it reminds me of my reading recovery days, where you have one-on-one, either in math or literacy with a child. And it might be a 30, 40-minute time, but you get so much accomplished, whether it's in person. And they found even on Zoom that they've been able to really address a lot of these gaps that way. So instead of even a small group or a larger group, you know, the more teacher time, that more FaceTime that a student has with direct instruction based on what that child needs, the better it's going to be. So we're going to take some of the lessons learned from this year and really apply them before and after school into the summer and into the next years. You know, we really want to take the things that have worked well. And we're going to be sharing with the board some of our reading data. We've got reading data now, pre-K through 12. We have math data. They're working on their interim assessments for the state. And we're finding out really some some good news, too. We're finding out what kids need, but we also find out what they what they already know. So and then we can fine tune instruction. So that's a long-winded answer, but it's two parts. So operations needs to support it. And then this CARES Act is going to give us extra leverage to support our kids.
Thank you.
You, Councilor Baumgartner, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you Superintendent Austin and the Board of Education for your excellent work in crafting this this budget. I know that just given the financial uncertainties over the last year, I'm sure at many points, even while you were deliberating on the the this budget, you know, there was a lot of moving targets. And obviously, you know, you mentioned you had the focus of delivering a budget with a zero percent increase. And I think not only did you certainly meet that, but you also just again provided a budget that did not short end any form of investments on the on providing high-quality education to our children. So I really commend you for for being, again, good stewards of tax dollars, but also prioritizing our children and their future as well. And so one question I have, I think I already know the answer to it, but it may be helpful for the public, is just to explain some of the differences between, you know, categorical grant and a competitive grant. I understand with categorical grants, they're more narrowly defined. You know, for for example, you know, Title I through Title IV, really isn't a lot of negotiation or wiggle room on, you know, how those dollars are spent. But once you start getting into the competitive grants, you know, the DODIA grants and the magnet school assistant grants, these are grants that you and your team, Superintendent Austin, had to compete with other districts and in some cases in our in the state and around the country. And you made the case that, you know, our children are worthy of these additional investments. And my question is, you know, how have you spent these dollars? And and I remember in your last presentation, you're looking to apply for more grants like this in the future, which I think is absolutely great. So maybe quantify the, you know, the impact and and make the make the case to the public so they fully understand, again, the the great work you're doing on this front.
Well, thank you for asking that question, Andre. In the presentation, anybody can go and look at the different categorical grants. So there's a series of title grants that really support districts with high needs and free and reduced lunch. We're this perfectly diverse community of 50%. And so we have received funds through Title. Title I schools have been earmarked as Claude Chester, Catherine Kolnawski and Westside. And then it went to the Groton Middle School. However, you know, we have populations throughout our district. And now that we're going to have five magnet schools, we're really going to have all of our schools very well balanced to mirror this community. We already know that today. And it's important that a district that has 50% free and reduced lunch make sure that we share those different funds throughout the district. So we've always held on to a district portion of that Title I. Those funds have been used for additional tutors. They've been used for additional programs to partner with NESTS and Project O in those schools. However, I have to say that we are doing that even more with all of our schools now that they're even magnet and we can share some of those resources. In Title II, we've really looked at our mental health. And almost that entire Title II budget has been around getting some really important professional development for all of our schools, for our academy programs. They're doing so much better. The kids are doing fantastic. But it's because of the money that we've put towards this. And we've been working for seven years to improve social, emotional learning and mental health of our kids. So I would say in Title III is for our EL students. So with the categorical, they still are very specific in how you have to spend it. You get to pick and choose some of the partnerships. You know, we certainly utilize, because we're partners with Learn, so we we utilize a lot of resources through our RES. And, you know, people who are more local, because it's more cost effective. We've even noticed that our professional learning on Zoom, while it's not in person, but it has been highly effective. So we've been able to send people to more people to national conferences on Zoom. So we really are able to use those title funds for those kind of things. And with the competitive grants, however, we write a grant that is really in, especially the DODIAs. Really, the intent is to make sure that our military students are doing as well as everybody else. And we found over and over again, the first one was the literacy grant. And what we did was we partnered with Teachers College, Columbia University. We saw enormous growth for all of our kids and military kids included. And so, and that has, we're sustaining that through other funds that we have through the title grants. So that hasn't gone away. It's, the grant has gone away. But we still have the highly trained teachers and coaches that can, when we have a new person who comes in, they can train. So it's kind of a train the trainer. And they still partner and collaborate. Those Wednesday afternoons are great for that. So when it came time to compact curriculum, accelerate curriculum, our teachers are ready to go because of the high-powered training and the resources that this district has provided through operations, but also through grants. So like I said, it's a two-part series that we always have something for in the operation budget. But we're able to do the kind of work we're doing because of those additional multimillion, I think in the name of eight to nine million dollars in the seven years that Dr. Grenier and I have been together and doing this work. And I have to do the shout out for him, of course, because he really led this ship and this journey for all those years. And I so appreciate it. And he actually was the one who started us out on our budget. Back at the end of the summer, he and I were starting to look at this. So when he left in December, we had something that was really viable and that I was able to work with the Board of Ed to get us to that zero number. I don't know if that helped, Andre. That was a long-winded answer for your question.
Very much so. And thank you again for your work. I'll be supporting this budget. Madam Mayor, do I have any additional time?
You do. You have 45 seconds.
Yes, just a very brief question. And I I see here, for example, the the DODIA literacy grant expired in in would have been last year.
Yes.
So did any of the ESE ER funds through the CARES Act, were you able to kind of to cushion the the loss of that grant to, you know, provide some of those additional literacy program supports that through that that DODIA grant? That way, you know, obviously, you know, you had, I'm sure, the the team and staff in place to provide these services. And and I I wouldn't imagine they they went by the wayside completely. So were you able to at least provide some of those remedial supports, even despite that, the fact that 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 those grant funds expired?
The grant funds really has supported us in a big way with substitute teachers and with tutors. And having our specialists work with the tutors, you know, has been a really good partnership. So we've just put posted for additional literacy and math tutors that will extend for two more years because the next ESSER grants go all the way till September 23. One of the things we did, though, at the end of the grant, before it was done, we had some money that we were able to secure. And Lucy Cawkins and her team of experts had put together something they called virtual learning. They've recently put on in together summer learning units that can be rolled out individually with students or in small group, in person and virtual. Those were so well received by the teachers because we were able to put up a teacher college staff developer, and they are expert teachers, and our teachers are just as good as they are because they've learned from them. But they were able to put those up. So if a family couldn't get on a Zoom and they, you know, until later or in the weekend, they could still watch lessons. So whether our teachers were live streaming and recording themselves or whether they were able to publish these virtual lessons, that was so supportive. And our teachers really appreciated it. So we really, down to the very end, and then certainly, like you said, the ESSER can support more with the staffing. But certainly, if we needed more books for our libraries, our classroom libraries, we could also utilize it for that.
Well, you may have the most difficult job in all of our town and, you know, you've weathered the storm very well.
Well, thanks.
Very proud of you and keep up the great work.
I have a good team.
Councilor Heed is next.
All right. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Okay, so I'm looking at the budget. And first of all, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've put into this because I know it's it's really tough. And and the number one priority this year has to get the kids back up to speed to catch up, you know, from last year and all that. And it sounds like you're on your way to doing that. So I'm very appreciative of that and just want to recognize you for it. Oh, you're welcome. But when I'm looking, you know, we've heard, and this isn't really criticism, it's it's just a question. You know, we're we're going to, we approved the Groton 2020, we're building, we built the middle school. We being the town built the middle school, the two elementary schools are going to open in September. But I'm looking at like the staffing and specifically on four dash one. You know, for the most part, like you increased for the school budget increases for teachers over 21. But then it drops by four tutors, for example. And, you know, you go down there and and I just want to make sure I'm looking at it the right way. So when it comes to administration, you're actually increasing a person from 34 last year to 35 this year. So not sure, that might be the data director person that I saw on a later page. But maybe you could explain why the the numbers are changing. For example, if you go back to custodial, I think that is on five dash 94. You drop one total, right? But it's you shifted half of custodial from Northeastern over to, is it Catherine Kolnawski? No, Charles Burnham. So, you know, I'm just not sure what what to make of this. If you could maybe explain the staffing. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a jigsaw puzzle.
Yes.
When you talked about the CARES Act, because we needed additional part-time custodians to keep our buildings so super clean, we were able to be able to support them through these grants, through the ESSER and the CARES Grant. So some of the staffing was actually taken care of through the the CARES Grant. We also had, we have the new student data manager, of course. And in this budget, we're looking to have a full-time athletic director that can oversee the entire campus. In the past, we've had athletic director that's really a teacher, so they teach part-time. This year, our principal, Jeff Koteki, who was principal of Westside, is now the assistant principal at Groton Middle School. And he really took on that extra responsibility this year to take over that. So instead of paying an additional stipend next year for the elementary, we felt like if we could, I mean, middle school, we felt like if we could have an athletic director that was also administrator to do evaluation and could support administratively, they could oversee the entire campus, middle school and high school. They could coordinate with Parks and Rec. They could make sure that all these wonderful fields are being utilized the right way. You know, communicate even with elementary with what we're doing in for sports and activities. So, you know, that is something that we've put in. There wasn't an increase to the budget because we had some things being taken care of in the CARES Act. We were able to reduce other things too in the budget in order to get what we wanted. That's a kind of a broad perspective. So you will see some things that look like, you know, a half of, you know, a half a position going here or there. So there were some movements with, especially with reducing the three schools to two. And certainly, in the way of custodians for next year, we're still going to need to keep up with this. We feel like at least for a portion of the year. You know, with this cleaning, our students are not being vaccinated yet. And, you know, we're not sure where that is on the horizon. So we have to make sure, even though the adults are vaccinated, that our kids are really in a safe place.
All right, right, good. And just to footnote, kids 16 and 17, if they choose to get vaccinated, should get the Pfizer vaccine. But of course, everybody probably knows that.
Yeah, we're waiting for the others, right? They haven't been, yeah.
So then, just a follow-on question. You know, why, I mean, why would we drop the tutors by four for a total? Is that because you have fewer schools? But it's, you know, I just want to understand. Thanks.
I think that they were picked up by the ESSER grant. So a lot of those shifts, I said, it's like a jigsaw puzzle. So because we have this this next ESSER CARES III and CARES II, we're able to pick up some of those that had been in operations and put them in this grant until 2023. So that was able to reduce the funds, that was able to save in operations. Yep.
All right, gotcha. I just want to make sure you have what you need to to get the kids, you know, back up to speed after this past year. So so that's all. Thank you very much.
Just wanted to note, we are at eight councillors. Councilor Aubrey had to step away. She stepped away, I believe, at 6:33. So we're at eight right now. Any other first time hands before we go to second time speakers? Councilor Bordelain, you have the floor for your second time.
Thank you. I had another question. How, what percent are we funding the site budgets this year?
The site budgets went up to 2%. So we were able to secure that. We have not touched those. Oftentimes, Mike and I will, you know, put a hold on them in the beginning of the year. So, you know, they might get their supplies and everything in the beginning of the year. And then we we do a check, we checking every month to see how the funds are flowing and where we are. So the principals aren't used to spending their entire amount until probably this spring. So we kind of do it very carefully and gradually for that spending.
Okay. And then the other question I have is English as a Second Language tutors. I know those, in my opinion, have always been kind of short. I know there was one going between the middle school and the high school. Is there any talk to increase that? I know students at the high school that need that support. You know, it it can be troublesome when you have a lot of high intense classes and not have that support on hand for all of the classes. And so right now, where do we stand and how many English as a Second Language, middle school, high school support do we have?
I'd have to look up that exact number. One of the things we did is we had a wonderful tutor who is certified. And she's now got her bilingual and her TESOL training. So we were able to add a middle school teacher, certified EL teacher. So now we have a certified EL teacher for elementary. We have a certified teacher for middle school and one for high school. And then the Paris helps support that. So they really are teacher leaders and they oversee the the tutors. And but you're right, I can take a closer look at that. We look at that probably every quarter with Marie Lozano, who really oversees the whole program. And we make sure that the caseloads are very doable and the kids are getting the hours that they need. So that's something we are conscious of. And if there is a need for another tutor, we would certainly find a way to do it. And I think this latest ESSER is going to be supportive of that as well for EL students. It's part of the package.
Right. And then my last thing is looking at foreign language. I feel as a district, sometimes we we lack extras on the foreign language. I know for my own self, at the middle school level, when a teacher went out because of medical or whatever her personal business is. or whatever her personal business is, um, it's hard to replace those those tutors. And and with that, um, students did not have months without support staff that could come in. Now, they might have had teachers that came in that were certified, but they weren't certified in French. And it's hard to replace when when one of those students uh teachers um at that level of professionalism have to be away. Is there anything in this budget that's going to protect that in the future? Because I almost feel that we have to have extra roving teachers for these. Um, foreign language is a requirement for college. I know minimum two, but obviously three is better. And um I I think um my segue part of that is um, under the individual education plan, um, students who have IEPs um that plan to go to college and utilize um, you know, the services and take foreign language. Foreign language can be very tough. Um, and even a resource room teacher can only support a student so far if they don't speak the language. So I feel um as a district, or I can speak personally, I feel and I've seen that, you know, we could use some more support in foreign language to support the kids in, you know, under um the um IEPs as well as have them available to help in the absence of of teachers who may um become sick themselves or need time off for personal reasons. Um, so I I I just encourage that if it's not in this budget, that we look towards um funding that and making sure that we have, if we offer the language, we have to offer um the skill set necessary to give the students. And we need tutors in the foreign languages to be able to help the students um in those classes. Um, because the teachers and other folks can't assist uh on that level. Uh, and as we know, it is a requirement. So I just um wanted to check and see if that is possible.
We added to the um high school, which I would love to be able to add to the middle school is American Sign Language. And ASL is a viable language. We also have French and Spanish and in the high school we have Latin. So being an NYPD school um for the middle school and, you know, all the way through the high school, it's really important. One of the latest DoDAA grants that has come across my desk is in the way of world language. Um, so and civics, so it's kind of an interesting grant. So we're exploring that right now, but we I do understand, especially I like the idea of maybe some tutors who could help out. We've actually hired a couple of teachers that are duly certified in both French and um and Spanish. And that's so helpful because, you know, we really rely on how the kids are signing up for their languages. We give them in sixth grade, of course, the carousel, so they learn a little bit about both languages. And then they have to select by seventh grade, by eighth grade. It's a core like high school. It's every other day, eighty four minutes. So we're really encouraging our languages from an earlier age now. So it's something we'll definitely keep our eyes open for and I definitely will re- report back to you. I understand. Um, you know, and I would love to someday have um foreign languages in the elementary school, even if we start out as an enrichment club. So.
Thank you.
It's important.
Thanks, thanks for everything again.
Right. Are there any other first time speakers? Um, it, we need six counselors to have a third round of questions. Are there six counselors who would like a third round of questions? I need hands, please, if you would like that.
Are you, is someone asking to speak is what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm I'm supportive if anyone wants to speak, obviously, yes.
I have three counselors who would like a uh third round. Counselor Baumgardner, Counselor Melendez, Counselor Obray and Counselor Bordelone would like a third round. That's four counselors.
One five.
Can you raise your hands, please, and keep your hands up? Thank you. Counselor Heath, Counselor Baumgardner, Counselor Melendez, Counselor Obray is five. Thank you. Counselor Franco would like to speak again? You have the floor?
We had, we had, we were looking for six counselors. You got.
I'm sorry.
Didn't you count five counselors in favor of a third round?
I did. The rule says. Okay.
Can we just let her talk?
So when I spoke the first time, I used my whole five minutes because you went on to somebody else without telling me my time is up.
Yes, we you did. Um, one more time for hands, please. One more time for hands for third round. We need six. Franco, Heath, Baumgardner, Bordelone, actually lost people. Melendez, one, two, three, four, five. Is there a six? Bordelone, are you six? Are you raising your hand?
I will always support the person's right to speak, so you can always count me in.
So we have Obray, Franco, Heath, Baumgardner, Melendez and Bordelone would like a third round. So there you go. We have six now, Counselors of Perry.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Franco, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I'd like to thank you all for um a very rough year and everything that you've had to face in the past year. I have said this before, it's my son's last year. And while we're here, I'm going to embarrass him, so. There we go. That's my boy. His senior year. My Board of Ed meeting with you guys to pass a budget on his last year in school.
And we want a real live graduation this year. We're working on it.
Absolutely. So um, I've noticed that there's going to be, you have a projected increase of students in twenty twenty two. Can you tell me how you did these calculations?
So we actually had support from Malone and McBroom to look at projections. Um, and they actually did a thorough study, um especially since we were reducing the three schools going into the two. You know that um with our referendum, we need um with those two buildings, we need six hundred and four students in the seat in October. So it's really important that we have the best projections possible. However, it's not an exact science and a lot is done through projections and averaging. This year, like none other, and you've heard across the state, we don't know that all of our kindergarteners came to school. There were families that said, I'm just keeping my child home. And, you know, so we're going to have to do a really thorough screening process. Um, we're already working on kindergarten, um, you know, transitioning in and registering and getting to know them. And I think we're going to have a little summer camp for kindergarten before school starts so we can really know how they're doing. We also have a Transition K program. So my concern is that in the primary grades, we're going to have more students than even accounted for in the projections. Um, and then with the Navy and, you know, the the submarine contracts, that's also always something that is, you know, a moving target. So, you know, and it moves all the way through the year. So we'll still have themes, will still be really kind of the Mary Morrison. It will be mostly uh military school, but with other students from across the district. And we'll have Charles Barnum, but our military families will be able to choose other schools too across the district. So it's a lot of coming and going. I can say that myself, being the military junior that I am. So um, you know, it's it's a hard thing to really predict, but we're trying to keep track of it through our lottery process. And we also have a brand new rollout of online software for registration. So everybody will be resubmitting and that'll also give us better idea of how many students we have. We had a lot of students being homeschooled. I would say probably the number got up to forty or fifty. So how many of them are going to be coming back? Hopefully, most of them. And um, and then there's the um prediction that just like with Grotten Middle School, we received many students who had been in at the Learn Schools or at New London coming back to us. We saw that. And we actually had a cost savings of a hundred thousand dollars or a little over that because of that. And so we're hopeful that the same thing will happen to our elementaries as well. So we'll just keep you posted. I'm watching it all the time.
All right, thank you. And then um, I have had nu- numerous people talk to me about rumors that the middle school was built too small. That's what I hear a lot. So can you tell me, can you talk on that and and set the record straight and let it, let us know what's going on with that?
We do. It is different than what um we've used in the past. Typically, schools were built so every teacher had their own classroom. With the way that the grant process is going these days and the way the State Department looks at schools, they want the utilization of space a hundred percent of the time. So it's just a shift of mindset. So most of our core teachers have their same classroom, but on every level, there is um a teacher workroom where they can go and work, they can collaborate, there's big tables, there's, you know, smaller tables and seats and lots of technology. But um there are teachers who have to share classrooms. So we are utilizing that space, I would say a hundred percent of the time. But there are lots of big open spaces too that we're learning to use even better, like the cafeteria, not just for lunchtime. So and the the black box theater and outdoor space. We're talking about outdoor STEM gardens all across, you know, so really utilizing our space. But it's not like back in the day um where a teacher had their own classroom for the whole day and it sat empty two to four periods a day. So the space is being used and I think that's for cost efficiencies too when we're building these new buildings.
Okay, thank you. And again, I can't thank you all enough. I know it's been a very tough year and you have definitely heard from the residents of Grotten a lot, I'm sure. They have spoken out a lot about decisions, you know? And I know it's been a tough year and I thank you all. And um even from my son, thank you from his last year in school and doing it all from home. It's been, it's been quite the ride. So thank you all and I I can't appreciate you all anymore. Thank you.
Counselors of Perry, for your first time speaking?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate you Superintendent Austin and the Board of Education for arriving at a budget uh which uh is the most reasonable I've seen. Uh, and uh we are here to consider passing the budget. Um, I I can't imagine anyone being opposed to it or anyone even being able to express opposition to it because it's at the NBR. Uh, I and I uh, we've had other meetings with you in which we've discussed the processes that you've done uh and gone through and uh what you're planning for the schools. Uh, I think uh you've done very well. You've been very patient tonight. I'd like to see us simply approve the budget if we can. Thank you.
Counselor Obray, I think you had your hand up for your second time? No? Okay. All right, we will vote on account ten eighty and the amount of seventy seven million, four hundred thirty eight thousand, ninety dollars. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine counselors. And I will entertain a motion to recess. So moved, moved by Parker, seconded by Heath. All those in favor of recessing until Wednesday, March thirty first at six P M, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, we are recessed at seven oh four. Thank you so much, Chairperson Watson, Superintendent Austin and all the members of the board who came out to be with us tonight. Thank you for your fine work and please keep going for the kids.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.